Our work session to order, March tenth, two thousand twenty-five, at five thirty. If you would stand with me for a moment of silence. Have a pleasure, Dr. Flight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got one item on our agenda, and it's our telehealth discussion. And we have, I think we have three?
Um, I think we have two or three tonight.
Two?
Yeah.
Okay. I was talking to Montgomery, she was frontier health, is that? She's with, uh, I think she's in frontier health. All right, let's open the floor up for discussion.
Well, um, the board had requested to have a work session, and Valid is here as well, and we've got Wendy here on behalf of EMD, and I think they're listening in, they, oh, they couldn't, uh, they couldn't get here. Uh, so, you know, Valid wants, I know they've met with some of the board members, um, so they wanted to just share some information on what, you know, if you all decided to open up an RFP and what Valid Health could provide as far as telehealth, and then, of course, we have some of our nurses here as well, so answer any questions that you all.
And they stand up and introduce themselves, 'cause I don't know who all the nurses are and where they're at?
The nurses, yeah.
And who's this beside you?
Oh, this is Karen Ward, she has took Serena's.
I only knew one Karen Ward, so, and she's a nurse, so that was kind of throwing me off.
This is, yeah.
So are you from within the system?
Yes.
Yeah, she came from Mountain City.
Mountain City.
What position there?
The keeper.
Good to have you.
Thanks.
She will be a great secretary for y'all.
Sounds great.
Wendy, do you want to introduce your nurses?
Yeah. This is Shannon Wood, she is at Laurel Elementary, and then Karen will be back in a minute, Karen Ward, she's the, she's the middle school nurse. I think everybody knows her.
Can you let them know, like, can they, can they stand up and introduce themselves?
Yeah.
Like, are they RN, LPN?
Yeah, let them stand up.
I mean, just so we can get, well, yeah, so I can get to know them, and like, what you are, LPN, RN, that kind of thing? How long you been with the system? We don't get a chance to see the nurses.
All right, um, my name is Shannon Wood, I'm in the LPN, I've been with the school system since I was seven. Um, I'm currently at Laurel, that is my home school, and also assisted, coordinated school health with the, the screenings for the system.
Thank you.
I'm Hannah Dunn, I'm at Roanoke Creek, this is my first year, I'm an RN.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Davis, and I'm up at the high school, and this is my first year, oh, and I'm at LPN.
And you're at the high school?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and then Karen?
Karen is at the middle school, but she'll be here in a minute, she has to step out, and then Christie Bishop is our Mountain City nurse, and she's an RN, but she couldn't be here tonight.
Who's it, though?
Uh, Shelby Hammonds is filling in for Katie Lunsford, she had to take leave due to the flood circumstances, so Shelby Hammonds is a temporary sub.
LPN?
At, at Doe.
So all of them, okay, thank you, it's good to meet you guys.
We slipped Valid, it's Valid, if you want, well, we're calling it Valid, we refer to this community hospital.
That's right. So thank you all for allowing us to be here tonight, I'm Chastity Tremlett, and I'm the administrator at Johnson County Community Hospital. So, uh, just to let you know a little bit about us, uh, we do have a rural health clinic that's inside of our hospital. Jane McNaught is one of those providers, Jane is here with us tonight. Uh, I know the board members that met with us was able to meet with also Lindsay Yogers, and then we have Dr. Henry Hartsoe. So we have those three providers, we are looking to see if telehealth through our rural health clinic at the hospital would be something that we could partner with the school system. We have partnered in the past on several of those different projects, Project Teach, we've had the physical therapy and occupational therapist in the school for, I don't even know how many years, so we partner well together, we provide great care, I hope when Michelle and I meet, so we hope that this will be a venture that we can take on as well. I'm going to introduce you to Rachel Coon, she's here tonight from the telehealth department, she's going to do a little bit of representation, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Chastity?
Hi, everybody.
Excuse me just a minute, Chastity, before you, uh, go any further, uh, I'd like to recognize you as one of Johnson County's graduate from the high school here also.
Oh, absolutely, yes, I proudly am a graduate of Johnson County and came right back here to work, I've never left. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Chastity, before you all start, with it being the rural health, which, uh, I'm good with that, um, with them having their patient load, and ETSU now closing, and it's going to be shifted a lot, um, it said they have busy schedules, um, and we have sick children, staff, whatever, would they in turn, like, Valid in general, be able to have providers through different telehealth locations um, that would pick up those calls if the clinic was full that day or something, or the staff was, would they still be able to have other telehealth sites pick up from within Valid?
Well, yeah, that was the rare circumstance, absolutely, we would have the children cared for. That is not going to be our plan. We are looking at that, ETSU did drop that bomb on us last week, that no one was prepared for in this community. I've been working with Michelle on that this week and last week as well, to get out to all the parents of all the providers, I've reached out to all of them, 'cause of course we can't take everyone.
Right, yeah.
There's a sixteen hundred patient panel, um, to see how we can spread those out in the community and get those kids, especially the resources. Absolutely, we will look at hiring other providers based on that volume we may have, and/or the telemedicine volume as well.
Okay, I know I've talked to some people through Valid, Seth Brown and Penny, I believe her name is Penny, um, and they were saying that there's a lot of locations, um, like, if one clinic's full that day, one, another location can actually pick up and see those telehealth patients.
So what happens now is, all of the school system use the urgent cares.
Mm-hmm.
That's how other urgent cares can pick up, that's not how we're going to structure ours.
Okay.
Now, yes, let's say all of my providers came down with COVID and nobody could come to work, we would absolutely have that resource from Valid that we could turn it over to an urgent care.
That was my question, a backup.
But we can have in-house at all times if possible, we will manage that from a staffing perspective.
What you had told us as far as the goal was to try and make sure Johnson County students and staff received care from Johnson County providers.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Perfect, that's what I was kind of questioning, like, if they were full, would you have backups since it is a corporation?
Absolutely, and that's the good part about us being Valid Health, is that we do have those resources that we can pull from.
Well, I mean, I think, it's, just from my experience, I think it's the best choice personally, which I'm not meaning to take up your time, it's just for, as a provider myself, the continuity of care is the most important thing.
Absolutely.
And with your use of Epic, um, providers can get linked in, and like, if my people go to urgent care, they go to the ER, they go to wherever they go, um, I can easily get that continuity of care, 'cause I like to review, though, as my people come in, I've been in the ER, I've been wherever, I can pull those records and be prepared for that visit knowing what's happened, and that would be great for the children and staff to have as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you guys.
And I have some questions based on what they said, but I want to wait until I hear the presentation to ask mine.
Sure.
I'm just writing down questions.
Okay.
So, um, I'll, I'll give a quick overview of how our process works. We, we work with several other school systems, but like Chastity mentioned, we have a dedicated virtual team for that, whereas you all would be using Johnson County providers. Um, so, we have a couple different ways that we can have families sign up, uh, we see staff and children alike. Uh, we've got an online consent form that people can sign up for ahead of time, that's online. We've got paper packets, which I brought copies to share with you all as well, that they can take home and bring back if maybe they don't have access to do an online consent form. We pick those up, we make sure that those are in a nice Excel file for the school nurses to have, so they know that who's already opted in, that sort of thing. We also have, um, the ability to, when the, when it's scheduled, um, through the school, a consent form can be pushed out through a text message to whoever the parent or guardian is, or even the staff member, and they can fill it out on the fly, so a couple different options there. Um, we work closely, like you mentioned, with Dr. Seth Brown, him, as well as, um, a few other physicians within Valid that have created standing orders for all of the nurses to have on-site, which would determine when and if, um, we, we provide point-of-care testing, so when strep should be used, you know, certain symptoms that person presents with, as well as flu and COVID, um, we just ask and, you know, with the understanding that the nurse has the ability to do that based on the standing orders, but then we need to follow up with a visit, a face-to-face with that provider. Um, we also have some. Face-to-face to video. We also have, um, just some tools that allow for a thorough exam, such as a digital stethoscope, so the provider can hear heart and lung sounds, as well as an otoscope, so we can see in the ears. Um, it can also convert into looking in the throat, that sort of thing. So, um, that's, that's a basic overview, it does bill to the, um, family's insurance, which, most of the time we have on file, being as where Epic is, is at all the Valid locations. If not, we get that as part of the registration process, and, um, we handle school notes, things like that. We work directly with the nurse, obviously, they're part of the exam, so they know what's going on as well, but, um, that's what we do, and we can send something directly electronically to the pharmacy if they're choice.
So, I have a few, a few questions.
Sure.
So, um, of course you all deal with all the insurance, um, providers can have access. Do you guys come into these stations, set up, teach our nurses, do training, do you do site checks ever so often? Like, what's your policy on site checks? Do you check our sites, make sure everything's in guideline, make sure everything's HIPAA, make sure everything's up to date?
So, we do, we show up, we train to all the equipment, we provide all the tests, make sure we keep up with the expiration dates on those. We also coordinate CLIAS for CLIA wave testing, we pay for those, we make sure those are kept up to date, and we do evaluate for, um, privacy and things like that. We, we come out on demand as nurses request, but we also try to make it by, um, at least every three months or so, just to check in and see how things are going.
Okay, um, in regards, huh, go ahead.
One other thing I would add to that is we do have a dedicated clinic, a school coordinator, that is a nurse, that works, like, works on our team, that works with just school-based.
Okay, would they, with our nurses, like, would they, um, does the school system need to have somebody that monitors their license, CPR, and all of that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Uh, the malpractice, does that align within the system and you guys?
So, on the malpractice, once, once the telemedicine visit, it's part of the MOU, you are covered under our malpractice at that point.
So there no fee to the school system?
Right.
We don't have a fee for malpractice?
There's no, no fee on the MOU.
Okay, and you guys kind of help keep an eye on expirations of CPRs and people that are delivering the care at the school side, or does the school do that?
The school does that.
Okay. Um, is there any kind of fee to the school system for this?
No.
Not a charge of it?
No.
And you provide and take care of the equipment, the wave test, the CLIA, all that stuff, and, um, all that does?
We, we get any reimbursement that we can get, we also have a cash pay if, if somebody doesn't have insurance, but those are the only, only ways that we get any kind of revenue, for lack of better words. From a school-based telemedicine perspective, we look at this as an access perspective. We're trying to put something in the schools in order to make sure that the kids, especially the kids, even though our ratio is sixty forty, usually staff uses it a little more than, than the children do in, in some of the other areas. But what we really want to do is try to make sure that these kids can get help as quickly as possible, and the parents, anybody has ever been a single parent or anything, um, the parents can still be part of that visit, 'cause we can connect the parent in on that visit, they can be part of that visit, but they don't lose work, they don't have to leave their job.
Very nice.
In order to do that, so that's, that's a big deal, I mean, she can tell you plenty of examples of, you know, a parent in Unicoi that was going to have to leave her hourly job, but we got her connected, you know, via telemedicine, so that she could be part of her child's visit, and we got the antibiotics to the pharmacy, so when she got off work, everything was taken care of.
And we tied in a Spanish translator.
Yes.
Oh, nice, okay, that was one of my questions, um, the translator. So, uh, also, as you all see the kids, say they're diabetic, and you notice that they're trending up, okay? There, are we, are you all at that point, the provider going to reach out to say they're endocrinologists or their primary, and say, hey, we keep seeing this kid, and this is what's happening, um, do you all do that?
So that will be a follow-up from the provider perspective, so we'll need to make sure that the provider will, but yeah, if, if it is told to us on the packets that they have an endocrinologist and so forth, we can make sure that that continuum of care follows.
So the provider seeing them could do that?
Yeah.
Let them know that they've seen them in telehealth and that this has been going on?
Correct.
Okay, and, um, what about mental health? Do you, will, do you all have an access to that?
So behavioral health, we have started rolling out behavioral health through, to the schools, they're a little slow. The behavioral health team has focused, I think, on Kingsport, Russell County. They're looking at additional schools, so we can add you all to that, that list and try, try to get it here quicker. What they're looking at is reset rooms to try, you know, when, when children kind of are, are having a meltdown, to try, how to have a reset room.
Absolutely.
And then also, and there's, you know, there's COVID dollars tied to that, so we can probably assist with that with COVID dollars. And then also, as quick as we figure out the provider perspective, so if we have the providers here, I think that would help us move at a quicker pace here to get behavioral health in the school.
If there's anything I can do, I can help with that as well. So, um, what happens, um, I just lost my train of thought, the hours, what is the hours? That's what I was going to ask, the hours for students and staff, like, um, is, what are the hours at telehealth is available? Is it available weekends, um, nights, is it for people getting off work, is there, what are your hours?
For, for schools, we typically see during normal school hours while the school nurse is there. However, um, and of course it'd be normal business hours for the Johnson County provider practices, but we have twenty-four-seven virtual care through Valid, so if there is a time when they're not at school or anything like that, we've, we've got a twenty-four-seven option.
So there is an option that can go?
The only challenge there would be, obviously, you're not onsite at the school for a nurse to perform a test or to, you know, use the otoscope and that sort of thing.
Right, but with any kind of call-in telehealth all over the world these days, that is an option as well, so that is still an option for you.
Yeah, correct. So I'll add to that, and the hopes of building this relationship with the parents and the school system is our hope would be on school days, snow days, summer days, mama doesn't have to get that, they'll already have the relationship with our practice and can do that telemedicine visit from home, even when school's out.
Perfect.
Now, we will bill through the office at that point, not through the school system over the sun, but they'll still have that relationship with us, so they can do that even on snow days, summer days, whatever that may be.
Yeah, all the way across the board, pretty much.
Absolutely.
So it's, it sounds like a beautiful continuity of care and great setup is what you have there, so, okay.
Chastity?
Uh-huh.
I have a question. Say you have a co-payment, you know, on this bill, who, who collects this co-payment?
Valid does. So, nobody collects it upfront, we wouldn't expect school nurses to do that, it's just billed to the family.
Co-pay is billed.
Okay.
Will you all come out and do, or will you post, like, on Facebook, online, or wherever it needs to be posted, that this is going to be initiative, if, if this is chosen, that y'all are going to be in here for our systems, you're going to get the parents active and let everybody know, maybe get a, a list of all employees and staff in our system and mail out something for you?
We absolutely do that.
Marketing?
We go to back-to-school nights on a regular basis every year, and, and any, uh, our relationship with the schools really, um, is what, you know, anytime they ask us to come out, there's back-to-school nights, there's other events, they ask us to come sponsor for children. We involve the Nice Wonger team to come out and do activities for those types of things as well, so we try all sorts of different ways to engage with families.
Perfect, thank you guys, I know it was a lot of questions.
I have a lot of questions myself.
Sure, it's all right.
So, I'm going to stand up, 'cause I have a lot of questions, but, first of all, I think you came in, and I didn't even hear what your name was.
Oh, Penny, hi, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, okay.
She's the director of Telemedicine Services.
Okay, well, my, my, many questions, I'm a little frustrated, I know everybody knows I'm frustrated about this program, but, we had this on the table last month to discuss, and a couple months ago, Chad had told me that he was approached by Valid Health, so I don't know which person came and approached him, but, um, I felt like this should have been a discussion before the last board meeting. This supposedly happened on that Tuesday before the board meeting, that I wasn't even included in that as the health services representative for the school.
Well, they reached out to everybody on the board.
Yes, everybody, not just Chad.
Yeah, they reached out to you all, they didn't reach out to anything.
But you're an employee of the school system, which is, we're her, we're, we're Michelle's boss, and Michelle's over you, and this has been a hell telehealth issue, I know since last March when I started trying to get into consideration.
Okay, well, let me finish before you get into everything, please.
So this is not just a new thing?
No.
But what I'm saying is, you had a prospective vendor at that point.
I told you, I have several.
And so after I talked, well, you would never tell me a vendor, number one.
Well, because it's not your decision to make.
Okay, but we're having a discussion about it, 'cause I have some other vendors.
Your question, there you go.
But, um, so my question was, um, after speaking with a board member that Valid had approached you all, I had reached out to a Valid representative, 'cause I wanted for myself to get some pros and cons with our program. Since we use EMD, I wanted to compare, I thought that was fair. But it was not any one of these who I reached out to, it was a Miss Angela Hughes, are y'all aware?
Yeah.
So we had a, a good conversation, and I got some pros and cons from her that I'll go into here in a minute, but, I told her kind of what was going on, and she said, well, if you are interested in joining Valid, please reach back out to me, 'cause I'm the one who set up Unicoi County, Washington County, Green County, all the other ones that came on board with Valid back when COVID started, um, initially all those East Tennessee counties were with EMD, okay? So that, I want to clarify your question, they're on email. You had asked me if we were the only county with EMD.
I didn't see anything like that about, questions about the, no, I'm saying I didn't see an email about the EMD.
Well, he just had to ask if Jonathan County was the only person that had, or the only, the whole system.
So it was just an email between you and him?
No, it was to the director.
Oh, but not the rest of the board?
To the director, no.
So this is a general question?
Question I had.
Right, but it's discussion, but it's still discussion, like you were saying about the discussion.
No, I just said, I, I said I would explain it at the work session is what I said, didn't I?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so there's no other discussion, I said I'll discuss it at the work session.
But what I'm saying is, it's that kind of discussion needs to be had with everybody, 'cause it's chairman, but he has no more power than anybody else sitting here, he just holds the gun.
I just asked, I asked a question.
But when it's being addressed to the board, it needs to come to the whole board.
And that's why I told him to wait till the lady, so I could explain it.
That's not preparing the rest of us.
There's nothing to prepare, I'm just.
It is, you're already just sitting there talking about, you're talking about the EMD and everything else. If something's going to address the board, it needs to come to the whole board, okay? Not just the chairman, the chairman is no different than anybody else. People are going to figure out how we're going to straighten this up, this little, this little Ken Stein, little meetings and little emails between certain people's going to stop, okay? So if there's an issue with things happening with telehealth, then you need to approach all of us, just like you asked, well, you didn't say about this, and you didn't let me figure this, same difference, okay? Talk to us all, where this is a board, not a one-man show, but a board.
Okay, well, the question was, is Johnson County the only school system that EMD has? And I said I'll explain that tonight, and that's what I'll say.
I've already covered that a million times.
Okay, well, the reason that we are is because during COVID.
I know why they are.
So we started our program in two thousand fifteen, Valid wasn't in with any other school system, as far as I know back then. Maybe, maybe one, Washington County.
We were, we actually used EMD anywhere when we first started, I was the project manager.
Okay, so they used EMD.
So does that matter?
Well, I'm just saying, so anyway, I became, we had EMD, we, that's who we chose, so did Carter County and so did all these others.
Yeah, so I've talked to you.
So then when I became a provider, that was, a, a year later, COVID hit, and so then, I think a lot of vendors was like, oh, this is a potential moneymaker, well, we're not being able to see people in person, let's do more telehealth. So Valid did approach us, and they also approached.
Us who?
Johnson County Schools.
Uh-huh.
And they also approached Carter County, Green County, Unicoi County, the other counties that had EMD, okay? So they chose to go with them, because we were in that provider situation, but we had a provider, which was me, so we didn't need to go with them, so we didn't.
Well, you're actually a subcontractor since twenty eighteen on your own with EMD, you don't even, you work for us, but you have a second job at the same time you're here.
The MOU here was still with Johnson County Schools, was it not?
Yeah.
Wendy?
Yes.
I have a question.
What does this have to do with anything?
How did you get acquainted with EMD to begin with?
They approached us, we actually use rural, I wish Christie was here.
They were in here before she became an MP, and then they had an MOU that died.
He asked me, he didn't ask you, he asked me.
And then, so then she's also a subcontractor.
Him. Mr. Valid said ask me to answer that question, not you.
Bring your tone down, please.
Well, he asked me.
No, you bring your tone down.
Well, he asked me.
Bring your tone down.
Because this is a discussion.
Well, you need to bring your tone down.
Well, then let me answer the question, please, when he asks.
I was also explaining something too, that you're also been just a, their own person.
All right, there's enough back and forth, you had questions for them?
He asked me a question. We had Rural Health Consortium on a mobile unit when we first started. I wish Christie was here, I think we had it, Ms. Linda Buck was the CEO of Rural Health, so they approached us, we was trying to put some type of a program in the school system, be able to see kids. So we was with them, and we had a mobile bus that Christie Bishop drove, and we had a nurse practitioner on that bus, but it would go to each school one day a week, so, uh, one school, one day it would go to Laurel of the week, it would be at Doe, it'd be at Roanoke Creek, and it, it went to Shady, 'cause Shady was open. So, it was great, 'cause that's all we had. Well, then in two thousand fifteen, I wasn't contacting anybody, I was happy with just having a bus, honestly. Um, they came and approached us, 'cause they also approached all the other East Tennessee schools, and some. and some kind of down middle Tennessee. They had other ones like Gibson County, um, Wrong County, other schools. So they came in and did a presentation to the board and was like, "Would you all be interested in this? Because we think this would work better for your school system, because we would put these telehealth stations in your school, and then your provider could see everybody, see, see the whole system basically any time of the day versus our mobile unit going from school to school." So then we, that's, that's how we got EMD.
All right. Who helped get that in our system here?
They just came.
No, you had, it had to be voted on by somebody to authorize them to come here.
Oh, well, they just came in, the best I remember.
They just came. I didn't even know it was a gamble.
Contracts that everybody used to sign that they didn't read? It was all in that?
It was in-
It was in what?
All the contracts that people didn't really read?
No, he just wondered how they came to Johnson County.
Yes.
Yeah, but he said, "Who signed off?" is what he said. Who signed off?
Right. Who, how, how did they get in our system here?
Well, you voted on it. They did a presentation.
Who voted?
The school board.
The school board.
It's all those things that they say, "This is really good for our system," sign, 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 sign.
I remember doing the bus and I remember doing that.
They came and did a school board presentation-
Yeah.
By PowerPoint to the school board.
During a work session.
And, and the school board voted to do the telehealth program and do away with working.
Did you all research this outfit before they were voted on?
What is this question about?
Who, who done the research? Who done the vetting on it?
They did a presentation, just like Valid came in here and did a little presentation.
Well, they've not even been here to do a site check according to their contract this yearly, you know?
Okay, I knew you was gonna bring that up.
Now, Lusser Faith said that she did one every year, and it was in her contract. May have been here since before COVID.
I knew you was gonna bring that up tonight, so-
Well, I should've brought it up.
It never was in the MOU. It was never in the first MOU, so that didn't bring it in.
Well, I have, honey, listen, I have every, if I bring something-
Show it to me then, please.
You just all email it to you, because if I-
No, I want it right now. It's never been in there.
Hey, 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 listen to me. You're not gonna get it right now. You're gonna get it when I send it to you, and it's out of their paper, out of the paperwork from this school.
Site check. Excuse me, uh- Mr. Rieber, was it ever, could we, I consulted you two.
I have copies of it.
Did we ever figure out where it was ever listed in the original MOU?
After you ask, I can't find it, no.
I have copies. I'll be happy when I go back to work after this to scan it to you, because if I bring information here, bet your dollar, I have, I have paperwork to back up everything I bring.
Okay, so you're saying you have in the first MOU that they were supposed to come do site checks?
I, I have it in what they, in their stuff they sent here that they were gonna do. Yes, I do. It says yearly. Even your boss that night said that their contract is yearly.
But it was not in the MOU that you said it was.
Listen, even your boss said that she comes there to be here yearly, and they hadn't been here since besides COVID, and the last meeting we were here, you thought that a little virtual visit on the phone was gonna be a site check. No, ma'am, that's not how it works, okay? This was taken in. The problem is, we need a new system, okay?
She said they did it as a courtesy, but it was not a card.
No, it's not a courtesy.
Yes, it was.
You can't just run medical and never have a site check.
It's not stated in the MOU.
You're gonna just free-willy run a clinic and just not everybody turn it up?
Okay, let's just go to the next thing.
Let's finish the other question.
What is the question she's answering? All I'm hearing about is EMD and how it's all in the bus.
So you tried to say that this was part of the reason?
She's gonna ask Valid questions.
'Cause you said this was part of the reason, you didn't want EMD.
Let's just point out the questions you have for them. You already know how we feel about EMD, myself anyway.
Okay, well, first of all, I said Angela Hughes never, she's not in here.
Angela's not here. They are.
Right, well, she was the contact, I was the contact.
What it, what it boils down to, this school board voted in a firm that nobody vetted or checked them out. And, and they fed them a bunch of lies on the MOU.
Technically, you guys should have all their paperwork. Go get it.
I have it right here.
You have all their stuff?
Okay.
I brought the MOU.
It should match what I have. Not the MOU, their site checks, their policies, their procedures.
It's not required.
No requirements, no policies, procedures for a telehealth company is not required? Are you kidding me right now?
Okay, now, she had questions.
That's 'cause you all have no clue medically what's going on, and it's been allowed in our school system for all these years. No oversight.
Okay, and she has questions for Valid.
Okay, so then, fine, just we'll step to something else. We'll step to something else for a minute. So when I spoke with Angela, I wanted to compare the pros and cons. So, we charge twenty-five dollar co-pay on blue cross blue shield is what the school system's insurance has, so I said, "Hey, how much is their insurance probably?" Ten K or zero co-pay pretty much. Um, ours is twenty-five. And just like Chastity said, sometimes I use an urgent care provider, and I said, "Well, what's the co-pay?" She told me it's forty-five dollars. I was like, "Well, our school is not in an urgent care setting. Why are we paying forty-five dollars?"
So forty-five dollars, forty-five dollars is the cash pay. So that's-
Well, I'm just giving information from your, your reputation, Angela, this came from her.
Well, here's the thing, every entrance is different.
Right.
So everybody has a different plan.
But she told me you all were seeing, like, our students would see an urgent care provider, and it would be a forty-five dollar co-pay is what she said.
At, at the time you talked to Angela outside of this, this discussion that we've had with Chastity, that's how it is set up for every other school. We use virtual urgent care. But what we plan to do is to use your all's providers, which are actually primary care. So that would be billed at a primary care visit as opposed to an urgent care visit, so we would have to go back to that fee schedule, but I'm assuming, Rachel, you're the billing person better than I am.
It would be primary care co-pay.
So what about when you said if it was a school day, you didn't have a care, it would be urgent care provider, what would that co-pay be?
That's gonna be, um, go ahead. I was just gonna say, that's gonna be a very extreme circumstance.
Because-
We have a provider in our office every day. We're a hospital. We cannot have a, not have a provider involved. They have two men.
And what you had-
We have two men capacity. Jamie's accepting, they're all accepting new patients. We have two new providers.
And what you had said is, we're going to try and structure this contract with Johnson County Community Hospital, ensuring that our staff-
Yes, we do, with our providers.
And it's like I told you when I stopped by, the, the only thing I care about is just fast, accurate service for the student and staff. That's it.
Continuity of care.
Okay, so here's my other question. So you're planning on using Lindsay and Jamie for these visits during the school day while they've got a schedule of other patients? Okay, so in talking with other school systems that have the Valid, that have, uh, Unacoi County, 'cause I have to go to the lead nurse meeting, so I talk to these nurses all the time. Unacoi County, Washington County, Green County, they told me they, they have Valid, and they hardly ever use it, because they can't get on with a provider.
But this isn't going to be, but this isn't going to be that type of setup, that you have a roving-
If they're using a regular, non, non-designated provider, it will.
That's if you have a roving doctor in Johnson City Medical Center that they wind up having to try and beep, who may have a full set of rounds. Well, no, he's not gonna get to you for three to four hours. But the way she's explained they're going to set it up is, we're going to have three local providers, and she has assured me that they will be timely and on point with care.
And she even said if they need to get more providers, they will. So that's a non-issue.
And that's fine, but I, I-
It's a non-issue.
Other school systems were promised that they would be out there too.
And one thing I wanna add, the specific school systems that you're talking about actually don't utilize this as much as they should. Go and ask Russell County, who has done well over two hundred visits in this last four years, and they were doing Russell County, Virginia, Smith County, Virginia. Because the only way this program is utilized is that the school nurse actually is the one that starts the visit. You know, we can train, we can do point-of-care testing, we can do everything, but when that patient, when that child or that staff member comes in and says, "My throat hurts", that school nurse has two options. I'll call your mom, I'll have your mom come and pick you up, or, "Oh, let me call your mom and let's go to the visit." And a lot of the schools, because they're so busy, I've sat in Washington County, Bristol City schools, they're like revolving doors, which I'm sure they are here too. But they, they don't wanna take the time, because they're either scared of the equipment, or, or they've got so many kids in there at the time. I think it'll be different here, especially if we connect it with what people are already comfortable with.
Well, just all the other school systems I've talked to is like, if you don't have a one-on-one provider like we've had, I mean, to me, I feel like the board doesn't appreciate that we've had a nurse practitioner in our school system to do this service. No other county does. I mean, everybody's like, "I thought y'all had like the, the perfect setup," which we do. Our nurses don't have to wait. You're not gonna have to worry about if Jamie or Lindsay's in there for fifteen minutes with their patient. Patient visits go over sometimes when you're in the doctor. That, that was the number one thing that the other county said, is if, when you don't have the one-on-one provider, the program falls.
Well, I, I'd like to say something to that. For one, you were taking care of four counties on telehealth out of our school system. You were taking care of four other counties as their telehealth provider, yet you were over our medical department.
And I explained that to you, that there was a physician passed away, that that was out of control.
That, that's been years ago.
Right, so we don't even need to bring that up.
Um, no, that's been years ago, but it's still happening. But, I'll tell you from a provider's, I'll tell you from, I'll tell you from a provider's standpoint, okay? My kids in this school system aren't getting telehealth, okay? My kids in the school system, parents are being told to come get them. My kids in the school system are getting their parents to pick them up, and they're coming to me.
Now, they're not, they're not-
Or they're going to the ER.
Okay, that's what we need to hear from the nurses. That's what we need to hear from them.
What now? What now?
That's what we need to hear from the nurses.
Do you know my patients? Do you know who my kids are?
No, because that would be a HIPAA violation.
Well, I'm just saying, you can't say it's not happening.
Wait, now you're, like, you're coming at us.
I'm not coming at nurses.
Yes, you are. Okay, listen.
How exactly is that?
You don't, just like, we don't know what you do all day, you don't know what we do all day.
Listen, honey, I'm just saying what my, my kids are doing. My kids are coming to the clinic.
At the beginning of the year, every parent is given paperwork about a telehealth. It's on the school website. I, whenever I send kids home, I say, "You can, you have, they have this option." Most of my parents utilize it.
When you send them home, but like before the telehealth, or they offered telehealth?
We don't push the program on them. It's their choice.
Then why do we have it? If they're sick and you're gonna send them home and they're gonna miss, the reason to have telehealth is to keep your kids in school.
Because it's the parent's choice.
Are we offering it?
Yes, that's what she just said.
Okay. All I'm saying, I'm not attacking nurses. I'm saying what I'm seeing in my clinic, okay? When the parents call and say, "Hey, we just got a call from a nurse," I don't even know half the nurses here. I'm not attacking you. I'm trying to tell you in my office, when I have kids come in, okay? And the parents say, "Hey, we need a Kim to see my child, the school nurse called, and we went and picked him up."
Okay, did they ask to do a telehealth?
I, I don't ask them that. I'd say, "Get them in." Okay, I don't go into that. I don't have time. I'm too busy. I don't have time to check that. I get my kid in, I see him, and I'm done. I don't have time to, "He said, she said, what happened? How did it lay out?" I don't care. When I'm not sitting here, I'm not a, I'm not a school board member, okay? When I'm sitting in my office, I'm taking care of my patients. I'm getting them out, getting them seen, getting them out, getting them treated, okay, and out the door. I don't sit there and say, "Well, tell me the chain. What happened? Just tell me what happened."
Nine times out of ten, when I offer telehealth, the parents want to take them to their own doctor.
And they have that right.
And so I think that's a little bit unfair when you say, it sounds like we're not offering it when we are. It's the parent's choice the majority of the time to want to take them to the doctor.
I have no clue. I'm only speaking for what is happening at my clinic.
And maybe your patients prefer you.
And they may. I'm simply explaining to you that when these people come in, okay? I'm not questioning them whether they're getting offered this or getting offered that, okay?
Then how do you know they're not getting it offered if you're not asking?
Do what?
You, you said they're not getting offered it.
Then mom, the mom or dad will, or grandparent will usually say, "Look, they called, or they seen by the school nurse, but they were told they had to be picked up." Yeah, and then if they say they never even offered to be seen, that's how I know. But I don't go drilling people and say, "What's your process? What's going on?" or this or that. The fact of the matter is, we need to get something in place that's around the clock, like through the week, for these kids to get a continuity of care to where these people are seen, where everybody is trained, where there's no question, there's no liability. We don't have an NP in our system working for two companies at the same time, putting everybody liable, whether they know it or not. They're young nurses, some are, some are older. You get into a court of law, and they say, "Well, why didn't you say, why didn't you tell us that, that Wendy didn't actually touch this kid? You done prescribed this medication, you're an LPN, and you diagnosed him. She called the medicine, and they never were seen, and then that kid loses their eyesight or whatever happens." And you're gonna be in a court of law, and the nurse is gonna be up there, and the judge is gonna say, "Nurse Smith, Nurse Smith, why didn't you report this?" Well, 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 Wendy's, well, Wendy's my boss.
They are in the back. They don't feel that way. We talk about-
I'm just using this for an example.
They don't feel that way. We talk about-
Well, I don't care how they feel. I'm talking about from a, a, a system, the system, our system is at ri-
There you go, you just said-
No, Hannah, let's not read in. The system is at risk. The system is at risk legally? Of course you don't.
I don't think they are.
The system is at risk.
It doesn't have to be me as the provider.
You cannot be doing both of these. These nurses don't agree with something, they don't tell on something, and then they go to the court of law. When they get pulled into the court of law, and the lawyer says, or the judge says, "Miss Nurse Smith, why did you not report this?"
I don't think they would, I don't think they would.
And they say, "Well, I, I feel like I'm kinda caught in between a rock and a hard place. Wendy's my job with the school, and I need my job, and I love my state job, but, and then, and then over here, but I, I knew it was wrong, but I didn't wanna do that, because I didn't wanna cause this and that. Who cares, Miss Smith? Your license is now gone. You're in prison for three years. You didn't lost your children."
Okay, I think we got a little bit-
We have to protect our system.
We've got a little bit off point here.
We have to protect.
We're really off point. So you've got to remember this. The parents have to have a form filled out, which is their history and then the medical history of the student. Almost every time I say I need those, the information, they'll say, "Well, I'll just go to my doctor."
Do they all have, um, does everybody in our school system, every child and every employee have all the information of how to access telehealth?
If, if, they all have access, but they have to have that medical form, just like if I went to your office, I have to fill out that form when I first come, right?
Who's getting it to them?
It's online as well.
It's online, plus, plus-
But they're sent out in the beginning of the year.
Everybody?
I got one with accents.
Most of my kids don't even have it. So, most of my parents haven't filled it out. So I, technically, I can't do a telehealth visit unless I have that information.
It seems to me that would make more sense to either, you know, put a letter in there and have whatever you gotta do, explaining this, that say, if you, if you want to have this access, like free lunches. You gotta put out your, your stuff.
Do you know how much paper that papers get, and it just goes to the trash?
But then you say you need to have this in with your packet.
The point is there, we are so dedicated to those kids.
Course you are. I have no doubt.
And we do not, nine times out of ten, I'll have a student, and I can call Wendy, Wendy, now. I don't have to wait. And then, if I, if I, if a parent said, the other day, I said, "You need to come up and fill out the form. I need the information." Because if you do one, and the parent hasn't filled it out, you'll never get the insurance information. You'll never get it. You'll never get it. It's just like trying to get physical sometimes. So the parents do come up, and by the time the parents have gotten there, I've already probably done the strep test, done the COVID, done the flu, and then we had, then I call Wendy, and I'll say, "This is what's going on."
Yeah.
It's an immediate, immediate-
That'll be the same thing there, 'cause you're already gonna have your standing.
We don't see that there's anything broken, Kim.
The broken is there's a lot. There's a lot broken.
We don't see anything, because we've never had a problem.
Well, you guys haven't, but as a school system, this is not okay. None of it's legally okay. None of it's okay at all.
We had our school attorney redo the MOU, and he-
I know he did. Listen, I don't wanna start talking about-
Where's, where's he at? Is he in Arizona too?
When the nurse just called you, you do a face-to-face visit with each child then?
Mm-hmm, and sometimes, sometimes the telephone, it depends on what it is, yes.
So you have a, you do tele, phone and not telehealth?
And you can sometimes, 'cause I've clarified that with Chris McCarty and everything.
Well, I mean, that one lady said, you said you didn't even get vitals most of the time, but that lady said they were required, and you said they didn't either.
Always, always.
Now, that was not you guys. That was a meeting with her.
Well, it was a meeting with Cindy on the thing, but she might-
Well, maybe you did something else when you talked about diabetes. I'm the one that needs to call endocrinologist, not somebody else, 'cause I'm the one working with diabetic. I call them all the time.
So you do it for all the schools?
I do it for my student, for my students. I call them. I don't want somebody else calling them.
I mean, I think that'd be worked out.
How many students do you cover, ma'am?
Huh?
How many students do you cover?
Two hundred and fifty to three in the middle school. And I used to do middle school and high school at one time for twenty years.
You're, you're just at the middle school, correct?
I'm just at the middle school, and I have three diabetics.
Who takes care of it on the other schools?
Each nurse.
Each nurse.
Each nurse.
Everybody communicates with the endocrinologist?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
And that is great.
And you also said that we don't communicate with providers. If you, provider, and a kid comes to your clinic and says, "I want that medical record," then you sign a release of information, and we send it, 'cause we've done that to other providers as well.
Yeah.
So you're acting like we don't do that for the patient piece.
Listen.
Well, while, while we appreciate the nurses, and I'm sure they go above and beyond. I know all these nurses, and they do great.
Of course they do.
And I would appreciate them continuing to do that. Our provider would also have to do that illegally on our side.
Absolutely, legally, legally. The problem is legalities, okay? I'm not gonna continue to find, sign papers up here saying that this board member's gonna be liable for the stuff I sign, and we're not assuring it. That's where this problem started. That's where this problem started. Me personally, me personally, as a board member, if I sign something and I just pass it on through here. I am no longer under your little umbrella, the school system umbrella of safety, okay? Because I am a, I'm an individual here that has not done due diligence. And read every single word on every single contract and made sure that everything's in line and I'll be dagged on if I'm gonna put my livelihood or my life or my freedom on the line for anybody. Okay, so as a, an elected board member, I'm gonna assure that everything that those contracts say are being followed to the T. To where I am not gonna be held legally liable, which can be done. It can be done. Just because I'm on this board does not mean I'm safe, okay? If anybody on this board signs stuff and they don't know every, every drop of what is happening, that everything is to the T being followed, especially in the medical world. Okay, and I'll be dagged on if I'll sit here. I would resign first before I continue to allow medical stuff to go on undone. Legally in this school system, okay? Cuz I'm not putting my life on the line for anybody.
Okay, well, nothing illegal, first of all. Second of all, the only, another problem I have was that, um.
Wendy.
Go ahead.
Can we get back to your questions for that?
Yeah. So there's another question I was getting ready to go to. As, while all of a sudden it's valid and them able to see our students automatically, when we've had problems getting them in, like if they did, the parent didn't wanna do telehealth. We've called the providers that they use and say, can you get them in? They can't get them in. And it's been the same way at their practice too.
You call the providers?
Yeah, if they wanna use a provider and they can't get in, we've called Sisters Carrying Hearts. We've called extended hours before and we've called Mount City Medical and sometimes it's a week before they can get them in because they're already booked. And that's been the same situation. Now all of a sudden, why can't they see the kids when they couldn't work them in before?
So if I can speak to that. So in the past, we've had Dr. Jim and Susanna Shine and they have both retired. We did not see pediatrics in our practice at all. That we, it was always a geriatric practice. When they retired, and Dr. Jim will actually retire at the end of this month. So he's just now phasing out. We did hire providers that would see pediatrics. That's five years old enough. Um, so that's new for us. And, and I know you're going on a word of faith from me. That's all I can ask you to do is to trust me until I fail. But this is a new service for us and especially with ETSU Extended Hours. We have partnered with them. They have been part of my hospital for years. And now we have a large population of kids out there without a primary care provider that we have committed to as Valid Health or corporate to take care of those kids. And I'll tell you, Wendy, how this came about is we watched the school board meetings. We knew EMD was up for discussion and that's why we jumped in. Because of course we want to grow our practice. We want to take care of the kids in our community. We are Valid Health. That's what we do. It was nothing personal. That's just something we know we have a good platform to do and that we want to serve our kids in our community. So this is brand new for us. Um, we're starting to see pediatrics in our practice. We have two new providers, Dr. Hartso and Jamie, that have open panels. Accepting new patients all the time. Lindsay will also take patients. Um, we're also open to hiring new providers if we need to, but we just seen the opportunity and now a bigger opportunity that ETSU is no longer there. And these pediatrics are gonna have to have some care. And just like you say, all the other offices in town are, and I called them today and sent that information to Michelle. It's very slim pickings.
Brandon, I appreciate y'all wanting to be their primary care, but this is our acute program. That we feel comfortable with EMD. I don't feel like they've done anything wrong besides the fact that you don't want me to be the provider.
That has nothing to do with it. It's called legalities. Legalities, okay?
Well, when you can shop, I would like to see the legality, legalities you're talking about.
We've been preaching legalities to you for freaking six months now.
Chris found any?
McCarty don't even know. I say it to him right to his face. He does not know what I'm talking about.
So are you?
There's two other vendors that I'd like to be able to present eventually before a decision is made to switch vendors.
Okay, you got, you got two other vendors?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Possibly.
Who are they?
Why aren't they here tonight?
Let us do some research.
Because you changed the meeting, for one.
Who did?
Who changed it?
We had to move this meeting, the work discussion, from Thursday to now, so.
Who changed it? I didn't change it.
One of my nurses couldn't be here. Well, I mean, it got changed cuz y'all had to do something else.
We didn't change it. That had nothing to do with us. We didn't even know nothing about it.
Anyway, there's East Tennessee Children's Hospital.
There wasn't, there wasn't any change.
There was no change, cuz Thursday was already set as a work session for.
Why were we denied separately? I don't know.
How come we're here tonight and not Thursday night anyway?
We are here Thursday night.
We're, we're, Thursday night.
We don't know that about it.
We've got a work session Thursday night.
Well, Thursday night, this is a work session.
I do, but we're, we're right now almost an hour and then we've got.
I emailed that out, I emailed that out two weeks ago that as discussed at the last board meeting.
We weren't there at the last board.
I know, that's why I sent that out. It's discussed at the last board meeting that the work session tonight would be. A telehealth discussion and Valid would be present because we talked about it at the February. They tabled that because not everyone was here.
There's no sense, there's no sense in, in bending policies.
There was several.
If you say we're gonna have.
Nobody's responded any of my emails since quite some time.
Michelle?
Yes, sir.
There's no sense in, in bending the policies when you just voted on one, if you're gonna have.
You're not bending any policy.
The fact of the matter is, we need to vote whether we're gonna be valid.
That's all, if you're gonna have a work session.
No, we have other vendors on the table that's not valid.
That's not up to you.
That's what you all wanted to do.
No, I didn't vote on it.
You can't just shut them out.
Well, yeah, but we have, we've got other things to discuss at that work session. We knew this one would take.
Ellen, I don't hear your bull crap.
We don't have to do anything.
That's the reason we're in the mess we're in today is because of some of your ideas that you had back in the past.
Okay. So first and foremost, we can't vote on bringing Valid in tonight because the first thing we would have to do would be to issue a sixty-day notice to EMD that we are not going to continue.
We can vote.
But then, but then we would also have to issue an RFP to allow Valid to put an actual proposal in along with your mysterious vendors as well.
Well, they're not serious. I can tell you they are if you want to do that.
Who is it?
One's East Tennessee Children's Hospital. They have a fabulous program and they actually have a pediatric nurse practitioner with those credentials.
Are you pediatric?
No, I'm not and I don't think they are either.
Didn't they just get this in? They had some pediatric doctors down?
They have ones that cover me out.
Family as well, and I'm family.
Say, didn't she just get this in? She had some pediatric doctors?
They have ones that take pediatric. Yes, they do.
You're not pediatric, okay.
They're family though and they can see pediatric.
Who's the, who's the second one?
So what's important about them?
Charity health systems that Sevier County uses.
I've read up on them. I actually have information on both.
Charity health systems.
I can share.
But East Tennessee Children's Hospital, you know, I like, I like the pediatric portion of, because that's just.
What about the adults? What about the, what about the staff?
They use Covenant Health for the adult piece.
Those two different companies?
We would have to probably do Covenant.
Two com- that's ridiculous to have.
Well, it's more about our kids in the first place and, and pediatric nurse practitioner would, I've talked to them too. I mean, I feel like they would be allowed to come do their own pitch.
I think statistically, it would be about fifty-fifty, because didn't you all say it was sixty-forty? So I mean, the, the adult staff utilizes it just as much as kids.
We have a lot of teachers.
But using two different companies to accomplish one goal would be asinine. Why would we go through Covenant Health and UT Children's Hospital or whatever? You said, why would we go through two different contracts?
That new Teladoc thing on our insurance as well that got added, I think this year on our insurance.
I, I mean, I think that other one's asinine. Why would we go have to mess with two different companies?
Yes. If I would just like to say, from a continuum of care, as Kim mentioned earlier. And whoever you go with, you know, I, I will work with, appreciate and just thankful that they will take care of our kids. I think that continuum of care, keeping those kids at home with familiar faces, now hopefully gonna get in with primary care with us at the hospital. I think having them seen by someone in the hospital or someone from another county would be just not a continuum of care with the epic and different things that we have. Which I'm sure the Northeast Tennessee probably is on epic as well, but I do think that will help just keep the care here at home. Take, let our community take care of our kids and that's my goal. And like I say, I can't prove to you that we can do it. But you just have my word that I can, and this board does. Um, and we would like the opportunity to show that we can. We would just like to keep the care of these kids here at home.
Thank you, Tess.
We have access to pediatrics. We have Dr. Seth Brown on our team.
We can work with Seth a lot too.
And he's here to help this whole community, absolutely.
He answers my calls and I've never met him in person.
Things in Valid Health, so.
And the behavioral health piece, I mean, I'm glad y'all had that, but I had Montgomery Gergen come. I don't even know if she wants to speak, but. We have an awesome behavioral health program in our school system.
That prescribes mental health?
They have frontier health therapists. I don't know if the therapists actually prescribe it, but we have telehealth if they need to connect. And I don't feel like we need to like ruin that partnership with them on the mental health side.
I think that it would be great for them to talk together because they work together anyway throughout the community and we definitely need mental health.
Frontier Health is already in our schools, is what I'm saying.
So Wendy.
Wendy, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
If EMD is so, uh, wanting to be into this system here. Why is not one of the representatives here tonight?
Wherever. They can't do a site check.
With the time that you did, she was on the last one, but she had a conflict with the time that we changed the meeting.
They had, they had thirty days to be in Johnson County. They had thirty days to be onsite. They had thirty days to do a site check and they had thirty days to find an NP.
There, there was no change in the meeting. I don't know where that keeps coming from.
They were supposed to be.
Well, they were gonna be on the.
If they wanna be here, why are they not here to represent their company and trying to sell their self?
I just feel like they didn't do anything wrong and we're familiar with the system and we've had a good program for eight years.
No, we haven't. No, we haven't.
They haven't been here since twenty twenty-one. Hey, they haven't been here since twenty twenty-one.
Been here since before twenty nineteen.
Have we had a good pro, have we had a good program for eight years?
This is about the school system, not you. This is about the safety and the care of our students. It's about you saving your position with EMD. That's all this is. You are a subcontractor. You are a subcontractor. You have two jobs.
We took that out of the MOU.
Same time of day. How can you be doing the duties you were hired for for our school? How can you do, how can you be over labeled?
Ever had a late anything in twenty?
We need to call Tennessee, the state board and explain to them, we don't need an RN. Your state guidelines are useless. We don't need an RN over our medical system because heck, it's not a full-time job. No, you don't. No, you don't. Because if you were doing your full-time job for us, as you're supposed to be doing.
I am.
You wouldn't have time to work as an NP during school hours for a whole nother company subcontracted in here using their equipment in our school system.
Kim, I've heard of this before. We don't see.
You were seeing, you, you were seeing four county schools in our school systems with their equipment on in our buildings, on our insurance, on our insurance, on our insurance.
I could not control that a physician passed away.
Don't give me that. I have the full track of that. You're saying that? Let me tell you what. I have every bit of when who passed away, who died next and who never had another collaborator in EMD. What the point of being here is not about you or your desires. The point is to be for this school system. I represent the Johnson County School System and the voters.
Do you have any questions about our, uh, mental health?
This is the point of the matter. We're losing focus here. She's worried about her own spot with EMD and enough is enough.
We were talking about.
Enough, even if it's not here.
I wasn't elected to protect your job.
Listen, even if I want to keep my contract with them after school hours, I'm gonna have to do that.
You won't be doing it on school property.
Wendy.
Has nothing to do.
You cannot be having that. You won't be doing their, you will not be using their equipment on school property. You will not use their equipment on school property.
Wendy, let me ask you a question. When you were working for the Johnson County School System, which you still are. Were you getting paid by Johnson County School System and EMD at the same time?
Under the current contract, yes.
For the last six years.
You were on the board and you.
No.
Yeah, you did, but that's all right.
No, I did not vote for no such thing as that.
Didn't even get that contract. Everybody was trying to finagle and, and do memorandums and.
How many years, how many years?
Contracts were, memorandums done on contracts that are expired.
I'm sure we can pull the.
How many years?
Contract that you did, since I became on the MOU.
How many years did you work for EMD and Johnson County High School?
Johnson State Schools since we sent the board sign the MOU in two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand and eighteen. You've been drawing, you've been drawing two checks.
No, it's pay-per-visit, which y'all act like we're making another hundred dollars per salary or something, but.
You're making, you're getting paid as a nurse here at the Johnson County School System plus four other counties on EMD, correct?
No. And I didn't even have, not even been paid for like a year of that stuff.
You just charged one county and you go to the other three counties?
No, I don't do the billing and I don't do any of that.
Hey, was you getting a check? Was you getting a paycheck from EMD?
At some, sometimes I was, but not every month.
Oh.
Well, you work for the school system and it's all tied, so I'm gonna request all financial information to you since twenty eighteen. I'm gonna request it. I'm gonna request all your paychecks from twenty eighteen on.
Completely off course.
No, we're not off course.
This is all dealing with business that's happening in our school system. Are you for the school system or are you for just generalized ideas?
We're talking about.
Twenty eighteen is when I came on the school board, Mr. Kevin.
Well, I.
We're done with the illegal activities in the school system, period, okay? So we're having this discussion and that's what's here for. This is what is allotted for this place and this is what's happening. And McCarty, sorry, I don't wanna hear his name again, because the next motion I'm gonna make is that he is removed from our attorney because he's not doing it correctly, okay?
That's fine. He's a attorney and he approved it and he's a lawyer, so.
Do you think lawyers are honest?
Now, you're, uh.
My goodness.
We're paying them.
But when I'm saying, listen, when I'm looking, what I was getting at, do you think it was fair for you to draw a paycheck from the Johnson County government?
Considering what nurse practitioner rank in the county, that was, considering what nurse practitioner pay is, that's kinda why the board voted that as a stop and.
Well, I'm sitting, I'm sitting here beside of one, a nurse practitioner. I don't wanna ask her what her salary is.
I get paid zero dollars. I'm in a whole healthcare clinic and I haven't got my credential in Texas. I'm, I've been working for four years, but that's not.
That's fine. Do you have any questions for the, uh, health representative, but overall?
No.
Since you want to bring, uh, Valid Mental Health Services in, I thought you might wanna hear what we already have in place, if you had any questions.
I think that that can wait until they discuss what they can come back with.
At other schools, we do partner with Frontier Health.
Frontier Health. And they can partner with this. We've lost focus. Sorry, ladies. This isn't about our school system at all. It's about somebody maintaining two jobs in our school system. And using the equipment in the other school to work out their hours in our school system, which is not even covered by illegal insurance liability. It's not against hurting the school system about their hours on telehealth.
Trying to come in and take over another program that we've done.
I, I want to? No. I've been elected by the community of this county to protect the money, the dollars and the children of this county, okay? In teacher's best interest, not you, okay? So if it hurts your feelings, I'm so sorry. I'm not here to be your friend.
There was another thing though, Wendy, that I, I forgot. You draw the paycheck from Johnson County School System. You draw the check from EMD.
And co-pays.
And then you had a private entity that you run on your own, that you were getting a check on while you was working for Johnson County School System. You was working at your own private.
Well, we could mention that. I used to get faxes from the Johnson County School System with patients from the, from the, from the system that you had.
Is that correct?
Are we, are we through?
Now, Mr. Long, I'm gonna tell you.
Y'all have no, what's happening in here or been happening in here.
That's why I'm getting at you for not vetting this person when you hired them, when they was hired.
What, EMD?
No, I'm talking about this.
Any of it. Any of this stuff that nobody has control of. Nobody knows what's going on.
Listen.
You go ahead. We, we're talking.
Come tonight.
Yes.
Anyone has any more questions? I don't feel like we probably need to be part of this discussion.
Sit down, Tess. I may need a hem or a doctor act. Sit down.
Uh, sorry. So you guys said, um, uninsured parents, how much would that be? So it's, it's forty-nine for the visit. Okay. And then let me pull this out.
We can lay these packets.
Can I talk as a parent, as a parent, and this has nothing to do with that person sitting right there. As a parent, and it's nothing to do with you, for you all look like super nice people, as a parent, I'm going to avoid Valid like the plague. If you go to UT Medical Hospital right now, like I've been down there with my aunt, they tell her, don't you dare walk into a Valid Health emergency room. Don't you dare walk into that monopoly. It is all about money and I'm not talking about you all. I'm sure you all are fabulous people. But as a parent, I drive my kids out of this county to try to find an HMG provider. I am not gonna go to Valid. Under any circumstances unless I have to go to the emergency room because they run a monopoly on our side of the state. I think it's sickening. I think they ought to be in front of the court, not you all, Valid, and they ought to be removed from our state. I don't care that wherever I go to Valid, it's gonna transfer to the next Valid person. I don't care. We're talking about choosing Amazon over a local person who has been here for years doing what? She, I mean, I can't tell you how many times me and my husband both have went to the school nurse and said, my throat hurts. I think I'm dying. They have done a strep test. Wendy has come down there and said, let me see what you got. You got blisters all over the place. Let me see this. Let me see that. And within ten minutes, my prescription is at Walgreens and I take it and I keep working, cuz I don't have a fever, so I can keep working and we're just moving along. My daughter, strep last week. It, what we have works. And the, I said today at lunch with all the people in the room, all the teachers, we love to sit around and talk on our whole twenty-two second lunch break, okay? And I said, I'm going to that meeting tonight and I'll tell you why. I don't want Valid in our schools. They're already everywhere else. I don't want Valid in the schools. Now, I'm not talking about the humans at all, so please don't think I'm talking about you all, oh. I've been to the emergency room here in town and they are wonderful people and they do a wonderful job. Y'all saved my mama's life one time when she went into apnea. I'm not talking about the people in Johnson County or the women sitting behind me, but I'm tired of corporations taking over every little bitty thing. And, and saying, well, it's got continuity and we're everywhere. I know you're everywhere cuz it's a monopoly.
You're just gonna have to get used to that, ma'am.
I don't like it.
You don't have, I mean, you don't have to use it.
But listen, I'm gonna tell you something.
I don't like.
Don't, I don't want, I, listen, I don't want you to say nothing about Valid Health. Valid Health saved my life five different times.
Because they're the only people here.
They've saved it down here at Johnson County. They've saved it in Carter County. They've saved it in Worston County and Sullivan County. And I don't want nobody, I don't want no one bad-mouthing because they've caught, kept me from dying.
That's good. That's your opinion. This is my opinion. We have to drive to Duke and we have to drive to UT Knoxville for all of my family health needs. Because Valid has messed them up so bad.
But the best one.
That's your opinion.
But the best one in this region is the VA Hospital and that's the one I go to most of the time. But if they're overbooked, if they're full up, then they, they base me out to these other hospitals.
All I'm saying is this, my kids and me and my husband have went through our EMD system forever. We have never had one single issue. I would say if you counted it up, Lord, I don't even know. I mean, my kids are sick all the time. I don't know, listen, you know, my mama fusses at me. It's the cats in the house. I don't know what it is. Okay? We're sick all the time. We be hitting up the school nurses, me and my husband and my two kids all the time. We're sick all the time, we be hitting up the school nurses, me and my husband and my two kids all the time, everything is taken care of, everything's fine. I have never paid Wendy out of my pocket ever in my life and nor would I even know how to do, there is no billing at all. And I can tell you right now, you go to these uninsured people in Johnson County, and there's a lot of them, and you tell them it's fifty dollars to go see the school nurse for a strep test? Ain't nobody going, including me. I can't afford that, I can't afford to go to, and I work it, I can't afford to go to fast pace because our, our urgent care is fifty dollars.
Do you see the insured or uninsured?
Do you see uninsured kids?
Yeah, they have a set fee for uninsured.
How do you get, does it set fee?
They charge them forty-five dollars.
Can you, oh, so it's forty-five?
First visit is free.
So, it's her first forty-five?
First visit is free.
First visit is free, any of these deals are forty-five.
First is forty-five, I mean, it's the same thing, you don't, people don't have to use valid, but they don't have to use the school system cuz they're not anyway, like you said, they wanna normally do theirs, their certain people.
I'll tell you this, I'll tell you this, everything they just said sounds absolutely fabulous, okay? It's high technology, they can see them during the summer, they can see them on snow days, all of that's absolutely fabulous, all of it's wonderful, okay? But, at the end of the day, you have a few people up there that absolutely, for some reason, hate that woman sitting in the chair. And Kim, I'm so sorry, let me speak, hey, hey, let me finish speaking, cuz you talk a lot.
I know I do.
So, let me finish before you break in, please.
Is that funny, Kevin? Is that funny?
Let me tell you something. There is absolutely no other reason to have these onslaughts every single time about, let me finish speaking. Not really, okay? Now, I have contacted you about problems before that I'm having in the school system and you have been yes ma'am, no ma'am, and helped me in a second. I've had three of your kids and they are beautiful, beautiful people. So, I have nothing against you at all, but Lord have mercy, this is every single meeting, every single time and it goes on for hours and hours and hours and hours. And it is ridiculous and it's an embarrassment.
It is, absolutely.
So, here's my advice, go get yourself a lawyer and if you say our lawyer is terrible, go get you one and do something about it. Until then, let it go. Go ahead and hire these ladies, they sound like they're fabulous, that's fine, but quit talking bad about somebody that has worked here forever and got us through COVID, which was a horrible mess for the whole country and nobody knew what they were doing.
She want backup?
Nobody knew what they were doing.
She wasn't even here in this room during COVID, maybe once, maybe once, I'm sitting right here.
No.
No, she was here during COVID.
He didn't have someone who did COVID that I know of.
Oh, she was down at her business during COVID.
No, she was not.
She was. I will defend her to the end on that, she worked countless hours, she had phone calls all hours of the night.
Now, you know that as well as I do, don't start covering up for her.
No, I will not, I will say that, I will defend that. There, we, we called her all hours of the night, it did not matter. If we called her at ten thirty at night, she answered the phone, if it was twelve o'clock at night, she answered the phone. She took care of doing contact tracing, they all did, hours and hours and hours after school. So, she most certainly did work.
She sat right there one night when you had a conference, uh, conference with the health doctor out of Knoxville or somewhere, I don't know where he's from.
Let me clarify something, my problem there is...
Please don't, I don't wanna...
No, I'm gonna clarify something.
You can, but you have every single meeting, every single meeting you clarify this.
What I'm gonna do for you is I'm gonna show you why.
And then every single meeting, you go right back to doing it, don't worry, I'll watch you call.
I'm gonna show you why. It's time everybody sees it, I will forward you the threads of emails, sorry for last, no, it's gonna explain why. Why is it drug on? Because they hide answers. Why is it drug on? Because nobody can find contracts. Why is it drug on? Cuz nobody has a freaking roof.
I don't like for you to pretend that it's EMD versus valid, when it's not.
It is not, it is what is best for these children.
At the end of the day, I don't really care.
Well, you wanna know why I'm still on that because it's still not, I don't have a problem with her, okay?
Yes, you do, it's not valid versus EMD.
Why do you think there's a problem with being her?
I have a big problem with her.
Just do like Gary, Gary mentioned, I got a problem with that lady, I don't wanna hear anymore.
She's deceitful.
I have no problem with her, okay? I will show you the problem of what's carried on for nine months as I tried to find information into this school system and everybody lying and not telling the truth, including the attorney, okay? When I asked for the contract, I was told by the person that resigned recently that they couldn't find the contract, didn't even know the name of the company. And I said, they said, tell me the name of the company, and I said, well, I'm not gonna tell you that cuz you'll go right back up there and dig it up, okay? If you don't have the contract, that tells me all I need to know, nobody's watching medical. Nobody's watching medical because nobody's even done a site check, okay? And there's a lot more issues going into this, it's nothing personable about her, but it's children's lives and it's healthcare, I'm a bit of an expert. I've been in healthcare for the since the nineties and I can tell you right now, I'm quite the expert.
I don't like it, they have faith, period.
We've got, we've got a question from...
It's nothing personal, it is about children and safety.
Just a second.
As an elected official, you have to take your personal beliefs out of everything and represent the people. Now, we're running a business here to save money. You owe her how much? Forty-nine dollars? Forty-five dollars?
Twelve.
That's pretty simple, that's five dollars you're saving taxpayers, we don't have insurance. Are you willing to save people money or are you gonna go with your personal vendetta?
It's not personal vendetta.
Miss Henley, I'm forty-eight years old.
What did you say?
With benefits, is that not okay? With benefits?
I don't know, Tina.
Mr. Taylor.
He tried to say that was my flat salary, but...
Let me tell you something.
No, it's not a flat salary, but we're paying a lot more out by paying a nurse practitioner by the school system, okay? We're paying her as a school system, as a nurse practitioner.
Are you gonna save money for these children?
But she's not working for us as a nurse practitioner, she's working as an RN. I'm, I'm talking about all the taxpayers' money.
I'm asking a question to you.
That's the taxpayers' money.
Are you saving me five dollars?
I'm saving you a lot more than that.
Where, where?
We're paying for a nurse practitioner in an RN, a two-year RN spot.
I am on the master scale and I'm not a part of a nurse practitioner.
And on top of that, we're also, they have the EMD charges, okay? But that's not even here nor there, it's safety, it's legalities in medical.
We've got a question from a young lady in the back.
Well, it wasn't a question, I was just gonna clarify, so if, if a child comes in and is not signed up for TINcare or, or insurance, we will connect them over to the navigator in order to get them, help assist, get them signed up for TINcare. Cuz you want your kids to have, and we have run into it in some of the school systems where they don't know how to fill out all that paperwork for TINcare. We also will connect, and this would even be a staff member, I'm gonna provide our own family when needed, is we have the charity care part to try to get people signed up for their, if they'll share with us whether or not they need it.
That's bringing great resources to our community, a lot of people don't know how to maneuver that system, they, they don't know.
Mr. Taylor, were you done?
Yeah, it's talking a bit long.
I have a question.
Y'all aren't listening to the reason why this needs to be done and why it's been such a mess for the last nine months.
Okay, hold on, is it working now? Or are we gonna take somebody that's never did this before and try?
We are still sitting here not fixing this stuff that's been trying to be fixed, because it's family and friends and not the reality of what's best for our school system. I'm not here for family and friends, I'm here for the school system and the county people, not, not family and friends. That's not what we're doing here, that is not what we're doing.
Can we answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, please, um, okay, so I said, I'm just, I'm trying to get this information back to the parents, so...
Absolutely.
If I'm an uninsured parent and I come in and I don't qualify for TINcare, but I do not have any insurance and my child is sick, how much is it gonna cost me? And I want everything so that they know and there's no surprises. So, you said forty-five for the first visit?
Forty, it would always be...
Forty-nine, excuse me. Oh, perfect, awesome.
But just so you know, we don't, we don't collect it upfront, they get the visit.
Yeah, of course. So, they, they have to pay individually for flu, COVID and strep tests also.
Correct.
Three dollars. It's, it's six sixty, that's three dollars, yeah.
Also, I will add that a lot of parents will just come and say they don't wanna telehealth visit, they come pick their parents up and they go to Rite Aid and get like a COVID or flu, so they don't have to go to the doc, so they don't have to see anybody cuz they don't want to or can't pay. And then they'll send, like I know with COVID, they'll send those pictures of a positive test, but so either way, they're still not being seen by a provider, which I personally don't love, but that's, that is another thing that they are doing.
If they can't afford, like you said, they can't afford it, the beauty in that is if they don't have insurance, those, their staff will help hook them up and try to get them...
They do that too.
During the school day?
Young lady?
Or do they come into office?
Okay, we got a question back in the back of our combat.
I just didn't know if that would be my job to help them connect with insurance or...
That's our job, that's our job.
Okay, so they would come and see you.
The only, the only thing we ask you, you to do is be the best hand there inside the clinic.
Okay.
Ma'am, I'm gonna ask you. Yes, go ahead.
The other thing I wanted to say in, in this, today isn't part of our school-based program, but it's part of our virtual urgent care and it's a cheaper version. And if chastity's providers are open to it, we can even look at it, we have something called an async visit, which is used quite a bit. And that's where if they do go get the COVID test or whatever, they send a picture of that, it, it's like chatting with your provider. Um, and you send that picture there and then that provider does see everything, talk to that patient and then sign off and, and get that antibiotic there. We haven't rolled it out into the school systems yet, we have it in virtual urgent care, but that could be an option cuz it's a cheaper option.
Thirty dollars.
It's thirty dollars.
But there's no face-to-face.
Yeah, it's async, it's considered, it's covered from a regular legal, regulatory legal perspective. Um, it, it's really a secure text environment kinda thing and we can, we can share that with you. It's probably one of our most popular things because it's real-time and you can get those answers.
So, you could, like, get different options available?
It's very low acuity, it's pink eye, it's if you already ha- had COVID and you have a picture of the COVID test, it's if you have flu and you have a picture of the flu test and so forth. You couldn't do, you know, um, I'm trying to think something, you couldn't do anything with endocrinology going, you wouldn't wanna do that on there. Um, I'm trying to think what else, but it's very low acuity urgent care type visits.
And then I have one more question and then I'm done with our questions. Um, what is like the average wait time for like a telehealth visit?
Usually we, and it depends, just like you all said, on if you have all the necessary paperwork upfront. So, sometimes we have to push out the visit cuz we have to have that parent's consent, we have to know that kid's medical history before we can proceed, but usually we do it within fifteen minutes.
If they have been seen by a previous valid facility, would you already have that information?
We would, but we always have to have a consent.
To just be tested, so...
And that school consent is good legally for the school year. So, we only need one...
So, if you can get it back one time, you are good.
Right, that's the school year and our legal department has signed off on that.
So, are we gonna have someone, like specifically just for telehealth, if they do decide to go with you guys? Just like to where I can put the appointment in and then within five, ten minutes, the child's being seen?
What, what we usually do is try to work with your all's calendar.
Okay.
So, Ra- Rachel and then Angela, you know, they, they kinda modify that, monitor that schedule. We're very careful about the school-based schedule, you know, y'all are the women, you gotta be careful. So, we kinda put the virtual urgent care a little on the side and move the school-based.
Yeah, cuz like I have to like shut and lock the doors and then we've got, I've got a line waiting after that, so usually make sure it's...
We will keep you waiting, we'll, we'll get you worked in and get you safe quickly, absolutely.
Chad, you have a couple questions?
I do, um, physicals. Wendy, you do physicals now, how much are those?
Twenty-five.
So, twenty-five. Mr. Tribbit, one thing we had talked about and you had said that the school system used to provide the service of doing physicals, are you all still willing to do that?
We are, you know, we're partnered with ETSU College of Medicine and we have the residents that come up to Johnson County and, and practice in our clinic. And what we have done in the past, we did that for the school bus drivers, we did that for the football teams, we did that for all of them as a community service.
So, there wouldn't be any charge for it?
There wouldn't be any charge, yes.
That's nice.
Wait a minute, I thought, I thought EMD done that on the football players, on athletic.
No, they used to.
Used to.
Valid used to prior to us getting EMD, valid did it years ago.
Actually, with valid, I think, I think it was Dr. Sean, it was partnership for them to get our Queen House Priests, that's what it was.
That's through our Royal Health Program, we still have students, yeah, but, but they still come, that, most of these young kids now don't wanna stay in the house, but absolutely. That's through our partnership with ETSU and their Royal Health students that come up to our practice.
You all do occupational testing too, like drug screening, who's our occupational site for here? We have people that we think might be inebriated during work, is that, is it them?
We do that, Kim, the nurses do that.
You all do it on school sites? As the occupational testing?
We do drug testing.
For staff?
Oh, no, for students.
No, 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 I meant like, who is our occupational place where we send people if we think they're inebriated?
Hospital.
Do we have anything set up with them, like we send papers down to get that testing done, like occupational testing? We, you and I had that conversation about if, if we do testing and it hadn't been done about like the occupational site, where is our site? Who's our contract?
I would hope if we think somebody's inebriated, we send them to the sheriff's department.
We do, I mean, we send them to the hospital and we call the sheriff.
Usually, usually it has to be...
It has to be an SRO.
Or SRO, wouldn't that be...
They, no, no, legally, okay? If you have a person that's inebriated or you think they may be inebriated on the job, they've gotta be sent to an, to a occupational testing site, okay?
And we are an occupational texting, testing site, we are, yes.
We should have a contract as such with somebody. I was approached by the city actually to do that a couple years ago to be the one for the city.
We have a Johnson County School System, if they can also send anyone to come in anytime.
That was just another question I have coming up about who does do that, who's our contract with, what are the guidelines? When a, like a staff member seems inebriated, something isn't right, where are we sending them?
So, Mr. Chairman?
Every place, every business should have an occupational testing site and contract.
Um, one thing, Shannon, don't leave yet, you were so close. I would like to hear from our own nurses to get your all's take on this because you all are the ones who will be working with valid or with EMD. And I would be very curious to hear what your all's take is on things.
Then you can start first if you'd like.
I've always wanted to be number one. EMD has worked for years, you know, I've been with the school system since oh-seven, way before we even got the program. It's worked, parents love it, I have parents that will call me, text me, need to be seen, it's quick, it's easy. Wendy's always available for us, she has never not been available for us. The way I look at it, if it's not broke, don't try and fix it. That's my opinion.
I'm a dodo on that, I've been here twenty-seven years, long time, um, before even having anything like that. I do know Wendy is always available, she is never not at my fingertips on the phone, ever, never have, she has not been there for me or for my students. Um, she bends over backwards, she gets, so I'm kind of like, I don't see that anything is broken, it has done so well for all of these years. I don't understand my, or of all of this, my understanding is Howard Carlton's, the one who suggested she get a nurse practitioner, he was the head guy on the board. You know, so he knew the ramifications of it, he knew what a blessing would be for our school system to have, a nurse practitioner to take care of our students, that's in the school system. So, I'm not really sure why we're bugging that system because it has worked so well for us. It's worked well for every one of my students or all of my parents and I just, I just think that it's just a blessing for all of us, I don't see any reason to change it.
It may be different, but I genuinely don't care, I mean, at the end of the day, just train, like, I'll try, I'll do what I need to do. It's just really, like, it is convenient for me though to be able to just call Wendy and she has never not answered, like ever.
Are you still going through, like, within, you have a telehealth, you're, you're pushing the button?
Yeah.
The policies, like the procedures?
The only thing that we have to do with mine is I have to call her on my phone because my, uh, voice, like they, we can't hear on the computer. So, we have to do it through the phone because they won't come out and fix it until you guys vote on it.
Is that your personal cell?
This is my cell phone.
And you're calling her on your personal cell or telehealth?
Who won't come out and fix what?
Telehealth, no, she is on the computer, I'm calling on speaker so that she can hear me. And the students speak, does that make sense?
On your personal cell, is it your personal cell?
Who won't come out and fix what?
EMD.
Until you guys vote, if you want, want to keep EMD cuz they're not gonna fix it.
They're contracted though, they're contracted right now.
Either way, I don't care as long as you guys, like, if you vote for valid, that's fine, I'll learn it, I really don't care. It is nice having Wendy, she has never not come through and the kids have their meds, I mean, it's not an issue.
Well, these other people local here, wouldn't it be nice to have those too?
Like I said, I don't care, cuz at the end of the day, I'm still gonna do my job.
So, Hannah, let me clarify this, are you using your personal phone?
I am using to call so she can hear. So, run with that what you will.
But it's not like, no, Hannah, that's not running, and Andy is not running, it's not running. Hannah, let's go back to who called me about all the issues in the beginning of the year, so let's not go there. All of the stuff you had wrong in school?
Yes, and I thought you were gonna fix it and you haven't done anything except make it worse.
You said it had taken better.
Kim, you don't wanna start with me.
Are you using your personal phone to do telehealth through the school system? Are you using your personal phone?
No.
You're not using your personal phone? But you said you can't hear her.
Through the telehealth equipment.
Are you using your personal phone to do that? What phone are you using then?
The office phone.
You said speaker phone, not your, not your personal ever.
No, with the clinic phone, on speaker.
And the problem with that sometimes is with my, with me is, my clinic has, you know, my desk, a clinic room, telehealth room. The school will not pay for me to have another telephone back there. I have one line, they don't wanna pay for another line. I have one line, they didn't want to pay for another line.
Then tell me that again, how does it sit?
Okay, so I have my main off my, when you come in, there's my office, my phone, then I have a clinic room. The second clinic room is my telehealth room, but they did not want to put in another telephone line so I could hear.
Who doesn't?
In your telehealth room?
Who doesn't want to put in another line?
So so sometimes when I'm talking to technical support, they can hear me from my desk, but I cannot talk to them right in front of my, right in front of my computer.
Who doesn't want to put in another line?
School, the school system didn't, they didn't want to pay for it.
So you don't have a line in by your telehealth system?
And that's not our fault, that's.
No, it's not your fault.
You know, so you can't, so if they can't hear us.
You mean with all the money the school system has?
I I don't know about y'all's money.
They can't put you in? How much does a line cost?
I I don't know, I just know I couldn't get one right beside my my telehealth computer. So, you know, so.
The problem is, is we have to put our phones, our work phones on speaker.
You're holding your cell, I was asking, you were using your personal.
No, a phone, and so my my room is private. So I'm, I am locking my door, I put a sign up, but we're still having to talk loud, but.
Because it's not, it doesn't care.
Because you guys won't vote, we can't get it fixed.
Honey, they still have a contract, that has nothing to do with that, we are actively in contract with EMD, there's no reason why they can't fix it. Okay, they're still in our school systems, there's no excuse for them not to fix everything and anything, but.
You know how great it would be to be able to come to you and talk because you are in my district, but you will not listen to me, you won't listen to anybody. We've had two parents come try to talk to you and they gave up.
Who are you talking about?
We just.
Talk to me about what, this tonight?
Yes.
Brian, Brian, who was your, who was your college roommate?
Uh, Matt Giles from South Carolina.
Um, it wasn't Leon?
What does that have to do with anything?
But did you grow up great, did you grow up great friends? Did you grow up great friends? Did you grow up great friends?
How were we to kindergarten together, is that what you want to know?
There's nobody in this room.
We have to remember.
There's nobody.
I trust more than you.
But you're saying it's personal, this is not personal. This is about the students.
Establish relationships with your teachers?
This is about the students.
We're off topic again.
But I don't feel that a lot of this has to do with what's legal. I feel like it's more friendships.
We're talking to.
I think that's what it is.
We're talking to the nurses and we got one other nurse.
It's legal.
Does it hurt somebody's pocketbook that's on the board?
Legal.
Does it hurt somebody's?
It hasn't hurt any mine.
And Kevin, I want to say one thing.
Wait a minute, you really think this has to do with me?
When we're talking about how angry she is that somebody's sitting out here.
The only person, Kim, the only person you've not attacked in here is Officer Stout.
Oh, my God. Who else?
You've attacked everybody in the room.
Who else?
Everybody in the room you have attacked.
Ev- everybody in the room, okay.
Okay.
Well, um, for one thing, we need to clarify something, as in the one lady that was put here is the one that lost her stuff and she was, it was set up so perfectly where she could attack me both times at the end of the meeting, it was kind of cute, but it was obvious. I I want nothing to do with Wendy's job or her spot, I do not have time for telehealth, not a single bit, okay? My passion, my love is geriatrics, I do see children, I see all, I see all ages, but my passion's geriatrics, okay? I I will have a fifteen-minute visit and I'm actually in there with them for two hours. I work on multiple comorbidity patients, that's my passion, those are my people.
I'm gonna interrupt.
I have no time for telehealth.
We don't care about your child, I'm sorry.
You just said it was personal because it's taking money out of my pocket, you just said it was coming out of my pocket.
Kim.
I have no desire to be anything, okay, with any kind of telehealth. Anything, anything, I want to make sure our school system is legally in line, okay? I want to make sure that the children are get the best care, the parents, they get all the help they need and that we are legal.
Ms. Klein, we've got one more nurse to speak.
So personally, I really like EMD, I feel like it's very convenient. I hate Valid, my kids are in the school system, they will not be seeing Valid. And that's my personal opinion, my kids will not be, and I know several other people who are disgusted by Valid. They are money hungry, they are a big monopoly, I will not be seeing it, my kids will not be seeing Valid. If I have to do that for Valid, that's fine, it's part of my job, it is what it is, but personally, I love EMD. It's extremely convenient, it's easy to navigate, especially being new, it's extremely easy to navigate. I don't, that's just my opinion, I would prefer EMD.
Is EMD gonna see you if you come down with appendicitis?
Maybe.
If you come down with heart trouble?
I will go to HMG, I will not go to no Valid facility, that's just.
Listen, lady, you ain't never had a heart attack, you'll go anywhere you can get relief.
Issues that you do not know about, and guess what?
It's no worse than I've had, I'll tell you that right now.
You don't know that, honey, because that's just not, you don't know, you have no idea my medical history and that's not your business. I don't, I don't care about your medical history because it's your business, me and my family will not be seeing Valid. You will go elsewhere, and that's my opinion.
Okay.
But you'll work for them if we decide to have, you'll deal with their.
We've got another comment back here.
But I do prefer you personally.
Okay, they said, again, ladies, Lord help me, I'm gonna be in there in two days, you're gonna be like. And one will take great care of you. There's no woman who talks bad about us, I swear, no, 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 that you all, swear, okay? So here's my question, if if you all were watching it, you saw all this fight going on. And let me tell you, this looks like a good time to, you're sitting in here, because I've been watching it all year. Let me tell you, it's like a Netflix series, I mean, we tune in every week or every month, but, okay? But when you're in here, it's different, like I'm nervous wrecking here and I regret saying anything in the first place, if I could take it all back, I would. So my apologies to everybody, my mouth is very large, I know, and I shouldn't have started. Here's my question, what in the world made you want to do this? And the reason I ask you that is because I know it's because Valid is more money, because they're a big huge corporation and they want more money. That is their kickback for local people, are y'all gonna make more money from getting this?
No, I feel we're out of.
And if I in the world, are you jumping in?
Because Valid Health has a commitment to this community and I will speak to, I'm born and raised right here in Johnson County. I've been through the hospital closing twice, our hospital wouldn't be here today if Valid Health wasn't behind it. It is what it is, people either like Valid or they hate Valid, that's exactly the way it is. I'm very thankful for Valid because Johnson County Hospital wouldn't be sitting down here and those heart attacks wouldn't be taken care of if we weren't there.
And my grandmother.
Where you gonna have a bad experience everywhere, you absolutely are.
And my mother was probably being alive today too, Chastity.
Absolutely, you have to take your children where you feel safe with them. The only reason that we want to do this is because this is our mission at Valid Health. We want to be in all the school systems, we want to take care, just like we have took care of all the physical therapy and occupational therapy in this school system for many years, we employ those two people every year and have. And I think Angie, everybody can speak to the quality of care that we give all those kids because they would not have it if it weren't for Valid Health. That's two large salaries, so yes, I know.
Let's just flirt around my head or something.
Absolutely, nobody's ever gonna agree to it completely, there is good and bad everywhere you go, just like there's good and bad in this school system. Good and bad down at the restaurant.
It just feels like we had this program and then you all could have came in eight years ago, but you didn't. But now you're wanting to come in and take our program, that's that's kind of what it feels like.
Absolutely, we want to take your program, we didn't, we didn't have the providers then to do that program.
But I was just going to run it good and we have a provider, that's kind of the concept.
But it's not taking your program, it's the school system's program.
Yeah, that's what I mean, you're taking a vendor that was dedicated to us.
Hang on.
You know?
All that matters is exactly what I said at the start and what I asked them when I sat down with them, are we providing fast, timely, accurate care? That's it.
Yes.
That's the only thing I care about, and if we do that with EMD?
Yes.
Cool, if we do that with Valid, awesome.
Mr. Greer, I have a question I'd like to ask you on that.
Okay.
If, say, we change here in the middle of the street. What level of person would be the overseer of the telehealth?
What do you mean?
Well, I'm talking about would it be a nurse practitioner, would it be an RN, L?
It would be two nurse practitioners and one doctor, correct?
Director, they have a medical director that'd be over there.
We have two nurse practitioners and one physician in our practice.
They would have an actual medical director.
Saying is, will they, will they be paid by the county or by?
No, they'll be paid.
Paid by Valid.
We're paid by Valid Health with no cost to the school system.
So it's no charge to the school system at all?
And we provide the devices too, so one thing I wanted to say, um, you know, school-based telemedicine is about access. It it's not a revenue generator.
It's never made money.
We've never made money.
This box right here of flu tips is three hundred dollars.
Making that money off that, I can guarantee it. Those costs, those tests are expensive, I think.
They are.
Yeah, and like I said, it's nothing, we've worked with Wendy for years, we've worked with the school system, it's nothing personal for Wendy. It was an opportunity.
I'm not really aware of this.
We seen the opportunity that they were looking at changing vendors, that's why we wanted to come over with that, what we had to offer. And we have providers where they can take care of children if we didn't have that before. And we get along that to the virtual visits through the urgent cares and the other Valid Health communities that I can't control. And our kids not be taken care of, that's why we've not approached it before today.
Okay, we.
Can I just?
Yes.
I I think the the biggest thing that I hear from parents through all this discussion is just the fact, one, they want to make sure that they can be seen timely.
Absolutely.
And I think that their other big worry, Emily, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is the affordability. And they're afraid that if they, if they're, if they, we go this route and they're saying that they'll be copay, but then they could also be additional kind of hidden charges, and I feel like that that is 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 where parents are kind of. That's their biggest worry, like we, they have been with EMD and they know what those costs are.
Absolutely.
You know, like they've, they're not being any kind of hidden fees or anything like that.
Angie.
And we don't charge for our testing either.
No.
We don't, we don't charge for that.
As a parent, I was going to a Valid, I would pay the copay at the front. And then every single time I would get a bill for seven dollars and twenty-seven cents for the strep test that had to go to a, you know, a special place for a strep test for the culture. Um, but with anybody else, with HMG, I've never had to pay for that additional testing or those additional cultures. But with Valid, I always got extra bills in the mail every time for two dollars and twenty-two cents, seventeen dollars and fifty-seven cents. It was, uh, they would nickel and dime us to death all the time and I eventually have switched all of our care to HMG.
So on the school, on the school-based telemedicine, because you're billed after the fact and you're not paying while you're in.
Yeah.
In the facility, you have that one bill that happened on there. And it's in that packet if you want to give her another packet.
But I, we do charge for the tests, they are, they're like three hundred dollars a box.
Right, so I, I, but like, you know, HMG doesn't charge for those additional tests. EMD doesn't charge for those additional tests.
Does it bill that on your insurance, like an itemized bill, the test? So you're being charged, your insurance pays it.
No, no, I'm paying, after insurance pays everything, then I have to pay those extra tests and she's nodding yes, that's that's what happens.
So EMD and who else you said is?
HMG does not charge for those tests, it's just I pay my copay, I get all the tests and that's it.
And and that's the way it is for EMD and that's what I'm saying, I think that that's just the parents' biggest worry, you know, that.
I don't understand though how they're not charging for the test, I mean, you gotta charge for your, they're getting charged for the test.
It's it's.
Whether insurance is paying or something, you're getting coded out as that.
The parent's not getting the extra cost.
I'm not paying the extra cost.
Well, I I don't understand how that goes working.
I don't either because I I don't do insurance billing.
Right.
I'm just telling you that every time I go to Valid, I get another bill every single month, it might be for, I mean, sometimes it's a surprise, seven hundred dollar bill, those are fun. Um, that I have to call about and they say oops-a-daisy, but I can tell you this, for the last year with HMG doing every single one of my visits in Abington, I have not had one single extra bill come in the mail, no oops-a-daisy, seven hundred bill, nothing. So not only is it some scary care in Kingsport, not here, y'all got my momma safely to where she needed to go when she had heart problems here. Um, not only has it been some iffy care, especially in Sullivan County and places like that, but I'm just tired of getting these random bills that I have to send on the phone to somebody for hours and, now listen, if it's a seven dollar bill, I pay it without calling anybody. But when it comes in nine hundred and seventy-two dollars, I'm gonna call and we're gonna talk for a while.
I'm just, I'm curious.
It's all the time.
I'm curious, um, as as in the billing, so I would be curious to see, um, how EMD's billing, um, how they're billing their coding out, because I would just be curious how they're not re- getting reimbursed for the test. Um, those things are outrageous.
They are, if they're just not passing it on to the patient.
So what are they doing to work it right at all?
So it's in, I don't know, that's, I don't do that part.
Can you get me some information on that, please?
If Cindy's allowed to give it to you, I don't do the.
I don't want the patient's name, I want to know how they're billing.
Paying additional test for strep where ours is included in the.
Right, I just would like to see the billing outline for EMD, can you get with us?
I can ask.
I mean, well, you're wanting us to keep EMD, so I would want them to be able to show me.
Please, I don't care how they do it, it can be magical.
But this is important part of it.
I'm not paying.
I understand that, but this is part of the importance of that, how is EMD billing, okay?
Why does that matter?
Why does that matter?
As a parent, we're getting a better deal.
It it matters completely, okay? It does matter.
To me, I'm getting a lesser bill.
Hang on.
When I go to EMD.
What kind of deal you? How much?
It depends, we've been talking about that for twenty minutes.
We have to see.
Seven dollars, seventeen dollars, seven hundred.
I am curious as to how EMD is doing their billing.
Well, it's probably the same as you do in your billing.
That's tomorrow, I don't.
Your job tonight was to find out all this information from all the vendors and so far, you've only been attacking people personally.
Okay, okay. Um, what I'm saying is if they're not, if other places like HMG, EMD does not have a charge, okay? If they're not, if nobody's coming over with an outline charge after their bill, what is different? What is, how is it being different, can you find out?
They may be writing it off for all I know, that's up to them, they're just not passing it on to the patient.
If you'll just email me that lady's number and so I can find, clarify that.
Another question.
Ma'am, last one, I'm working my way around the room, you're with Frontier, correct? Do you have any issues as far as a preference versus EMD or Valid, do you find you can work well with both of them?
I I was here mostly to represent the mental health side, um, and so I do, you know, we work with Valid, we work with whoever is willing to help the school system. So, um, that's what we care about with the students, so I don't necessarily have a preference on the medical side, just being honest.
Understood.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Montgomery. Is there any other question we have?
Okay, so we can't vote on this and that?
Well, according, that's that's the other thing, two things I need to apologize for. First was using my phone during a meeting, but I was calling Ben, our TSBA lawyer, and asking him that question you asked me as I come through the door. My opinion is you cannot vote on substantive issues like contract during a work session. Those are non-voting meetings and notice to the public would not be provided on the board's intention to vote, so that's from Ben.
That's his opinion.
Yeah.
Well, we can't really do it anyway.
And the second, the second. Second thing I need to apologize for is to to Kim, when she asked me if I was laughing, if everybody knows my sense of humor is, it's a little dry and I apologize.
You do it all to me, don't you?
I want life in at you, I was just laughing in general, but to apologize to you.
That's okay, I appreciate it.
Like I said, my sense of humor is a little different.
You know something, Kevin?
Yes.
We have had work sessions and voted on things.
I think it was, it was listed as that, I think, but that's the only difference, they just got to have the notes.
So based on my understanding of legality, we would have to have the work session and then had a pre- have a previous conversion to a special call meeting at that time. Which we would advertise at the same time as the work session.
The work session.
Can you guys get us all the information or do you have it tonight with what you had? And then Wendy said she had some things and she's gonna get EMD's charging and coding thing out, because I don't understand that. I don't, I don't know how that's being done to be able to not have anything left, like testing, I just have never heard of that. So I'm just curious as to how they do, how they do that.
I think it's the general CPT codes that we deal.
That's what I'm saying, the CPT codes and the testing, I mean, that is across the board.
We can follow up and email if that's okay with the CPT codes, right now, tonight I just brought the registration packet and the standing orders.
Yeah, I mean, if they're concerned that the people aren't being, are gonna be charged for it, I would be interested in to see how EMD does theirs. What's the difference, why is there something carrying over to the patient balance? Why is this not being covered by them, but they're saying that like you have a balance for testing from you guys, but not with them? I'm just curious as to why. What is the difference here? What is, what's happening?
Absolutely. And we definitely want you to follow up. We want what's best for these students and their families. We know what community we're in and that, we definitely know that's a challenge for our parents. And we absolutely want you to do your homework for the next session.
It's unnecessary. We have to. So if you guys can get all of your information and get, like you all had spoken about how you could maybe do some of the, with the Frontier for the mental health and then you had like the cash pay thing and then you were saying something about like some of the telehealth per se might be, have to be like third, it might be a different grade if it's more of a point of care thing, I think Penny you were mentioning.
Yeah.
Just give us some info of how it works and that kind of thing. And then, of course, we'll listen to what she has for the other places that she has.
Is there any way that you guys can maybe make a deal with Valid where there isn't any kind of surprises for parents?
What do you mean?
So like, okay, if my kid goes in, I pay forty-five dollars. I'm uninsured, okay? Pay forty-five dollars and then I get a bill for seven fifty or however.
Well, that's what they're going to clarify on how that.
So I'm saying if it sounds true that you will get paid afterwards, is there any way the school system, if we choose to go with Valid, can write a specific contract for our school system stating parents do not get any surprise fees?
Have you had that come up before?
No, because we bill afterwards.
Right.
Even if you did get a forty-five dollar bill plus what, three dollars or whatever it is for strep, it would be on one bill because that's different than going to a face-to-face.
So.
And it's going to be depending on your insurance.
Everything's going to be together.
It should be.
And it would be.
And that also, it's kind of hard. You can't really do that because everybody has different insurance.
Yeah, of course. But this is for uninsured people.
Did, oh, just for the uninsured? Is that what you're talking about? Well, that's easy enough. Yeah, the uninsured is easy.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
So I just kind of want to know what, like, what's the next step for Thursday or are we?
We have, on the agenda.
RFP thing? Are you going to vote or?
On the agenda, we have a, to either approve or, of course, when I talked to Valid, they said it would be sixty to ninety days. So there's nothing we can do immediately. So we're going to be with EMD to the end of the year to have healthcare.
Well, and we have to keep in mind also that April first is the deadline if we're going to send the sixty-day termination notice. So we're going to have to vote Thursday.
We'll have to vote Thursday, one way or the other.
But man, it's not that.
We can vote to continue or not continue with EMD. That can be a straight-up vote. They can have time to get their stuff together. You bring your stuff, get the stuff from you.
Well, they've already said they do not want to step into the year mid-swing.
No, we're locked in regardless. It's the middle of March.
So that's, that's on some of the agenda. And it's.
We will have to vote whether we're going to continue or not with EMD. That's your point blank issue.
For.
Till get them notification.
For next school year. Yes.
For the notification.
Yes.
We're too far into it now to change anything this semester, this year.
I was just asking, like, if you wanted the information from, like, East Tennessee Children's Hospital.
Yes.
But you should have been here tonight.
Before Thursday. I'm not trying to get it.
They should have been here tonight.
So they wouldn't come? You tried? Did you say you tried to get it?
We did have to do it.
Right, but they did still. So, yeah, we have to do the RFP, which then Valid will put in for EMD if they want to.
Yes, yes.
Is that for now, for Thursday?
Then we can talk to them.
Right. But I mean, East Tennessee Children's Hospital in Cherokee could have been here tonight to at least say, hey, we'd like your business. Let me give you an idea of what we can do. But they didn't.
But then even with using them, you're going to have to go to, what is the other company you said for the adults?
I'm just curious how the RFP works because I don't do that part. I'm not familiar with that.
Request for a vote.
And does that, but.
It's like putting a bid out.
And when does that bid go in?
Well, it will depend on what they decide Thursday night.
Thursday and then decide on the.
We're going to decide whether to just chalk EMD is what we have to come up with, yes or no.
Till the end of the year.
Well, yeah, we have to stay, but then it's already too far out with all this. But with the UT Hospital, isn't that going to be two companies, one for children and one for adults, you said?
That's kind of what they told me on the phone, but I had asked them, you know, they can talk to you all themselves too.
So they don't, they didn't come?
They couldn't come, I know.
And so then the other company for the adults, what did they tell you?
Cherokee Health Systems, they didn't. I was kind of thought, I was kind of misunderstood the RFP bid, but I guess they still could bid.
So really, they haven't even talked to you? Cherokee hasn't even talked to you?
I talked to the nurse at Sumter County Schools.
Not, but you have not talked to Cherokee?
No, but I did talk to East Tennessee Children's Hospital.
So we really all have right now on the table is Valid and EMD.
Well.
Frankly, because Cherokee didn't come. They didn't even want to talk to us.
When we send out the RFP, we'll get those, any interest coming back. If we get any interest coming back, then we'll talk about it.
And there may be some out there that has not even gone back.
So when is our place, when are we going to plan on having that proposed and ready to go?
Well, we've got to vote Thursday night.
And how are we going to go about getting them out to what systems?
We share those.
It goes out in the newspaper.
Goes out in the newspaper, on the website, on the listserv.
Well, we would have to get outside of Johnson County with the tomahawk and we would have to get outside of just the website. You would need to probably either go on the news, be emailed to all sorts of medical systems around us. It would have to be a mouse outreach to get the right bid.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we send a survey out to parents if they are comfortable staying with EMD or they would like to switch possibly to Valid and see what the parents and the staff feel more comfortable doing?
We don't have until April first.
I'm not finished talking because right now, this is what I see. We're either, obviously, we've got a few people who are going to vote to kick out EMD for personal reasons or we are going to kick out EMD to vote for a more expensive thing. And we live in a county where people don't have a whole bunch of extra money to pay for strep tests and COVID tests and all these things.
So here's where we're at.
So that's bothering me a lot that we're going to get rid of a system we have that's cheaper for a more expensive one that's never even been tried. And I think they're capable of doing anything. Don't get me wrong. But they're saying we've never done it before, but we'd like to try it, but we're more expensive.
Valid has done telehealth.
She.
We're just going to do it with primary care.
But she's never done that before.
They're just going to set it up differently.
Okay, she said she can send that survey out in the morning.
I think that would be a good survey because I'm telling you right now, no matter what a few people on the board think of Wendy Henley, I can tell you right now, right now, that there are hundreds of people that love her, number one. And even if it's not personal, there are hundreds of people that hate Valid. So you're going to get, I don't know how you want to work the survey and get fancy on it, but I'm telling you right now, there's more than just me and her in this county that aren't going to use it.
Well, I tell you what, ma'am, seriously.
Wendy says she's only doing a couple of them.
I like you too.
The only thing I have against Miss Henley is she's dishonest.
I don't, you don't know what I'm talking about.
She's dishonest. She's top paid from the county. She's top paid from EMD and she's top paid at her own business while she's working on the school system. And I don't like that.
You know what? Sometimes my cows get out, we got to go home and put them up during school day and then we run right back to school and do our job. But that's not getting paid double. Sometimes life jumps in and some of our other stuff happens during school day.
That don't make any difference. It's a known fact with her, though.
Yeah, I know because y'all signed the contract saying it's unpaid.
Unless you're allowed to do whatever you want on your lunch break that's unpaid.
It's a known fact. I'm sure that she had been, I'm sure that she, when she had her business down here at Shands, until some guys come in and kind of close it, that she used to take her patients she had done, probably up to the hospital. I don't know.
Well, let's not say things we don't know.
Dear school.
Let's not say things we don't know yet because I promise you I put my cows in during school.
I can probably find out.
Okay, we got questions.
Yes, I just want clarification. Which is going to be the cheaper option? I know that Valid said that we're not paying you guys from the school system. Are we paying to use the equipment? What's, okay, so how are you guys getting money?
They get paid by insurance.
Okay, so you're just billing parents' insurance. So all of this costs is going back on the parents' insurance.
Basically, they're setting up five little clinics in Johnson County.
It's kind of the same way they're doing now. They bill insurance here.
Right, but do we pay for EMD? I'm just wondering what's cheaper for our school system.
We pay advanced EMDs contracts so that they would give us, our school system and any other school system, an NP at no cost to your system, okay? No cost to your system. Only, she is not only the RN by state guidelines, okay? You have to have a two-year RN over medical, okay? Now, whether or not she went back to school and got that and her pay raised because she's been with the system, that's one thing. But she's employed under our school system as a nurse practitioner. I believe in all those fees as your malpractice, probably your licensing and all this other stuff. So she's getting all that paid through the school system, okay? That's our tax dollars.
No, they don't pay for my malpractice insurance. It's whenever the general overall school insurance is.
But do we pay for your licensing and all that kind of stuff? Nothing in your stuff?
No, why would, I don't know what you're talking about, Tommy.
Okay, anyway, we're paying her as a nurse practitioner.
I'm on the step ladder. I'm on the step ladder regardless of an NP. I'm on the master's pay scale.
Okay, so, but regardless, so we're paying her in this position, okay, for that, okay? EMD was supposed to provide a nurse practitioner at no cost to the system. Nothing.
Okay.
Okay? Only we don't have one because we have our very own one, but she's not only an employee of the school system, she's a full-on subcontractor with her own private contract with EMD.
But we don't pay anything to that.
No.
Not to that EMD, but we're still paying as an NP.
Okay, so with Valid, what will we be paying?
Nothing.
We'll be paying absolutely nothing. So they're providing their EMD everything.
Everything. And they would be in charge of all of it.
You see, that's my, that was my job prior to having a telehealth anyway.
Telehealth do not give her that bonus. I also have a master's degree and I can tell you the difference between my, and that's another thing. The difference between my master's degree and my bachelor's degree. Okay, I'm telling you right now, my husband has a bachelor's and I have a master's. It's about two hundred dollar difference. So that position, her NP, got her an extra two hundred dollars a year. I know that's a lot, okay? I'd be sarcastic and I know I shouldn't be at a time like this. But that was being paid and it hadn't, and that would have had nothing to do with WebMD or whatever it is even being here. That's just because she has her master's degree, the same as I do.
On the nursing side.
So that's not a cost of EMD. That is just how much she costs to work here, the same as I cost to work here.
Plus a nurse practitioner in Johnson City makes a hundred and twenty-five thousand. I think she makes half that.
She's not working for us as an NP. She is not working for us as an NP.
But it doesn't matter if you take me out of this equation, I still have my master's.
That's not either there. She does not work for us as an NP. She went back to school.
How much, how much are you being paid as an employee in Johnson County?
So they have the step system, so she makes more money because she has her master's, but that has nothing to do with the actual.
Since you're talking about this.
Okay, that's two different things.
How much money do you make in Johnson County?
I don't say this. So she's.
How much do I make in Johnson County?
How much you, how much you get paid for working in Johnson County?
I'm going to leave you guys these packets. If you have other questions, you all have my number. Please give me a call.
Well, Tina does my salary. I think it's like sixty-five dollars approximately.
Care, being invited.
I would like to have one of those taxis.
I want one for the parents and kids. I do not care about anything else.
Thank you. Thank you, Valid Health for coming. Everybody that's here, thank you for coming. Do we have anything else? We've got a motion to adjourn in a second. All of them clear?
I don't know if we need the insurance.